This conference will now be recorded.
Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages the public to attend work sessions and listen to the session. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome. Generally, no opportunity for public comment to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings. Everybody had an opportunity to review the agenda. Any questions, comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to the topics. First is our legislative update on page three. And do we have? Do anyone from PAC West joining us or?
Amanda, do you know if, oh, there it is.
Here we go. Hey, Phil.
Sorry about that. Brian is trying to call in as well. We were just having a little bit of issues on our end. Sorry about that.
I'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
All right. Well, when Ryan joins, I'm going to punt over to him to kind of provide a little bit of a political landscape of what's going on. I can give a little bit of that now, which is we are in the final stretch of session. There's a lot of pressure going on, both on the majority party and minority parties, as they try to wrap up the very quick legislative session. As you folks know, complicating that is the fact that leadership completely changed over one to two weeks ahead of that session. So the tone that is driving a lot of the frustration of what moves forward and what doesn't is more of organizational, in our view, trying to deal with new leadership. But at the same time, the agenda that was trying to be pushed from both sides or both parties as they wanted to exit the session with a specific agenda accomplished, both sides are finding that a struggle. That's more surprising on the majority side because they do have the super majority of numbers, but they are finding that their agenda bills are also having issues getting across and meeting deadlines. Part of that is funding, part of that is not. And so that is, I guess, from the eye of the beholder, a good thing or a bad thing. But the ramifications of that frustration is that people are starting to get angry. People are starting to walk away from the table and conversations. And that hasn't portrayed out into the budget quite yet, but a lot of the policy bills being driven. There's just a breakdown of communication. Some of those bills, you folks have probably already seen in the news, where ag overtime is one of those. But people are just walking away from the table. Right before this call, a press release went out from the House Republican Caucus that said, if we move forward with a specific tax, that they will walk away from the Interstate Five Bridge project conversations. And so I don't, it's just my view, when any side acts like that, it does prohibit and then carries that one issue into every issue. It's just not good for public policy. And so that's a little bit of the tone that's driving that. See, Ryan was able to join. Ryan, I was just giving a little bit of a political landscape, talking about session ramping up as it ramps down, for lack of better terms. Anything else you would like to add to that part?
No, I just, we are at the light at the end of the tunnel, I guess. Capital is being negotiated now that he just mentioned of the first bills that they address in the budget are the actual agency budgets. Then they move on to bills that have fiscal impacts. Those first bills that had fiscal impacts started moving out of committee just yesterday. And now you've seen some big announcements that they're making deals on the capital. So that's really the last thing that's done before they get out of the building. As far as I understand from leadership as of today, they have asked LFO to have all of the paperwork ready to move all the bills by the 28th. So that means next Monday, the plan, at least from leadership side, is to start moving things done and shutting things down by mid next week is what they have slated. Now, whether or not they're going to actually make that goal, you know, is anyone's guess. There's a lot that needs to happen between now and then. But a lot of the requests, if people were working and negotiating, all of a sudden have been cut off, cut short. We're involved in a whole lot of different negotiations on a variety of fronts. And listening to the tone from Leader Fahey and Speaker Rayfield is, they're calling the question. Time's up. If you don't have your negotiations done by now, it's too late.
All right. I guess, can we just pause there if there's any questions on the political landscape front? Other than that, I was going to transition to give a quick update on what we heard in the last revenue forecast and then dive into bill specific. But I just wanted to pause to see, Chair, if you have any questions or any other commissions.
Any questions? Not seeing any. Okay, go ahead.
The last revenue forecast, which was the March forecast, that came in, if you haven't or don't already know, came in very good for the state. They saw, in addition, and on the bottom line, we came in just shy of a billion dollars in new revenue to the state from the close of last session. And when I say new revenue, that's just predictions. It's not a new tax or anything like that. It's just the fact that at the end of session, when they looked out and tried to forecast tax return filings, things like that, they make these predictions. From that close of session prediction to the March forecast, those expectations grew by 900-plus million dollars. That will be available as this legislative session is tapping some of those for investments in housing. And I think they're going to be spending, do another round of, and I'm blanking the name, I apologize. It's a ERCR or something, employer daycare credit, 600 bucks per person. And that's timed to overlap when federal worker compensation expires. When that expires, they're trying to time that this one-time $600 per person for those that apply can access it again. They've done this a couple of times with ARPA dollars during the interim, but they're going to use part of that new revenue to do one more round of it. In the, in expectations, a lot of those that filed to make those claims were in the rural areas of the state. I think the number one county that had claimants was Malheur County, but that is just additional dollars getting out into the communities. They're going to use other portions of that to obviously increase or do what they call POPs, Policy Option Packages, or investments effectively in agencies. And part of it will also go to Oregon Health Authority to back, to help shore up additional people that are coming onto the Oregon Health Plan. There were policy bills that were passed in the 2021 session that are starting to have real numbers come back, and they're higher than expected. That might not be a shock to some of you folks, but it is going to cost more. Some of that is just expanding OHP membership. Others are policy bills like home visiting for new mothers. They did not have assured fiscal. When they passed that bill, it came in quite a bit higher. And so they used some of that new revenue to invest into those programs that already passed last session. What that really means in the reserves is that we'll be going into the 2325 biennium with a with a healthy reserve focus. Part of that is the Education Stability Fund. At the end of this biennium, there'll be almost $2 billion in that, oh, sorry, $696 million in that. Rainy Day Fund will have 1.2 billion, and together, that gets to just about $2 billion in state reserves. The ending balance will be just north of $3 billion. So that helps because of the inflation that people are seeing. They are expecting just to keep current service levels is going to be quite a bit higher moving forward into the 2325 biennium. And those budgets, as soon as we get out of this session, this October, you're going to start seeing the governor release the recommended budget for the next biennium. So that's a lot of information, just tossed it at you. But I will pause there before we get into policy bills. But bottom line is the state has good, healthy reserves to approach inflation as they go into next budget. And some of that money, a lot of that money is going to be spent this legislative session. And I see a hand up.
Thank you. You know, I'm concerned about Oregonians' mental health. Reading the newspapers and seeing what's happened in Portland last weekend. And they're all over the state. We may have healthy cash reserves. We don't have healthy human beings. Teachers, teachers are burned out. Healthcare workers are burned out. How does all that relate to the fact that, yes, we're balancing the budget and, yes, we're developing prudent reserves? How does that work?
Well, I think to your point of how do we address the needs we're seeing as people are reaching their stretching point, I think they're trying to tackle that with individual policy bills. Some of them that we've seen are effectively saying, how can the state help? Well, the bills we've been seeing brought forward are extra payments to these individuals. I think there was, and the one, two E-boards back, they were using additional revenue that they'd had to provide bonuses to frontline workers, things like that. I unfortunately haven't seen other policy bills that don't just seem like they're just giving bonuses, which is appreciative. But as you said, that really doesn't help the mental stress. So.
Okay, so here's daycare. Well, thank you, because it's an unanswerable question. If you could answer, I would be delighted and very surprised. So. Okay, so here's money for families for childcare, but there aren't providers. I mean, there's, there's no connection between need and satisfaction that I see. Where's the leadership on that? How can we, as a county, address the needs that our people have for childcare providers? That happening in the legislature? You'll probably get to that. I just want to call it out right now.
I think there's a lot of good intentions of trying to, they see the problem. But again, I don't see any policy bills being proposed to get to the root causes. To your question about what can the county be doing, I actually think this interim, and it's sad that it's not immediate, but given that I anticipate we're still going to be having issues while we go into the next legislative session with people having burnt out, being burnt out, as we have the Coastal Caucus, things like that, and we're developing policies that we can take to the legislature and said, please do this. I think that's the strong position where we can say, please listen to us. This is what we're seeing in our communities. Especially on the Coastal Caucus, I've seen those policies being received well. And I think leadership appreciates when you bring solutions forward and not just problems. And so to your point, I think, let's come up with a thought locally and start fishing that around to other counties in the Coastal Caucus, get our legislators on board, and start getting those bills drafted. And if it's something that can be done through E-Board, that happens every other month between now and next session. And maybe we can tackle it in an E-Board action as well.
So I would like to put that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have us as a governing body focus ourselves in this way. We all see the crying community need. How do we organize ourselves so we're most effective in the political domain? And I think our experts have just given us some indication. Maybe we can fold that into our strategic planning. Maybe just have to look for ways to actually do what he just said. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Commissioner Thompson, I agree with you. We are going to be meeting on March 1st to continue the task force discussion. And I think this will be one of the items that we, that we entertain is how can we best leverage, you know, what was going on in Cl辛 County and, and make the case to the state of the need. Yeah, thank you. Any other comments, questions? Well, thank you, Philip, PAC West, Ryan. Appreciate the update.
I guess I just wanted to pause. We're prepared to go over any of the bills. We have submitted updates on those bills in the presentation you have in the PAC West column. Those are the, as up to date as they can be from what's occurred on those specific bills. There are several that are still just sitting in Ways and Means. The first one on my list was 1409, oh, sorry, yeah, 1419, sorry about that. That, for example, is still sitting in Ways and Means. And it's technically alive. It passed out of its policy committee. But it is, it, it has no action scheduled at this time. And that needs to be occurring, as Ryan said, they're trying to get out ideally on the 28th. And so that paperwork, if we don't see something scheduled soon, I would imagine that that bill is considered dead. And we did have that as an oppose. So that might be a good thing. So. But Chair, I guess, do you just want me to go down that list or is, or do you want that in, or do you have that present?
If we want it, I think that Commissioner Thompson has a question, and then maybe we can just see if anybody has any additional questions on the bill. But Commissioner Thompson?
Trying to make your life easy, sir. House Bill, you know, I'll do what I can.
I appreciate it.
Okay, so House Bill 4092. I'm still concerned about broadband. What I understand is, don't oppose it. It's futile. It's going to pass. But the point of intervention is when the governor repopulates the OBAC. So I don't know how we engage you to keep us involved in that process. But when the governor is repopulating the OBAC, to be really clear that we want a consumer advocate for rural broadband, not a consumer, not a provider of rural broadband. So, so that's the, that's the follow-up. Because House Bill 4092 will probably pass, so let's not oppose it because it won't do any good. But let's look at the point of intervention when the governor repopulates the OBAC to look for that rural broadband consumer advocate. Thank you.
Commissioner, if it's okay to recommend on that, that's something that I think Ryan and I have seen success in. Instead of assuming that the governor's office is going to think that way of perhaps putting a letter together that says, as you prepare, this bill is now on its way to your desk for signature. As you're thinking of membership here, we would strongly encourage ABC. And if we have local folks, that might be a good recommendation there. I think it would be appropriate in that letter, say, here are some locals from Cl辛 County that we think would be a good fit. And so we've done that previously on other issues, and that might be a good one for this bill. I just don't want to speak for the commission. So.
I'd like to see that, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Phil, similarly. I think so too. Yeah. Yes. Has everybody had an opportunity to kind of review these bills? Or do we have any specific ones that we have questions on? I think Commissioner Thompson has.
So my friends have been sending me emails again. You know how that'll work. House Bill 4130, about wildlife bridges to get them across the highway. There was $7 million asked. How's that going?
I'm hearing good things on that. I think it's just waiting in Ways and Means. It passed its subcommittee. It went to its, or it passed its policy committee and its subcommittee in Ways and Means. My understanding is that they might just fund it without passing the actual bill because ODOT's already doing this work in other areas of the state. And so we're going to be looking for a line item specifically in the budget for that and potentially not see the bill itself pass. But it could either be scheduled at the end. They're just now starting to schedule those policy bills on the Ways and Means agendas. But I wouldn't be shocked if you just saw a line item in the budget for it that just says wildlife crossings. But I'm hearing good things.
Okay, good, because, you know, we had this big consortium to look at elk. And I proposed that we should have a wildlife bridge, and they laughed at me. It was crushing. But I think that if we can get some of those wildlife things for our elk around here, that'd be a good thing. I see more and more of them, not just in Gearheart, but down the road in Cannon Beach frequently. So keep this in mind, please.
Will do. And I, and I should just say that, Commissioner, though, and I completely blanked this, they did lower it to 7 million, just so you know. The original was 11. You are correct on that. But I think they did lower it to seven, and that's what I was saying. I'm hearing good things about. I think that was try to keep it moving. So.
Thank you, sir.
Well, Chair and Commissioners, if there's no other questions, Ryan and I are always available. Your team's awesome at sending text messages with questions that we are able to get back quicker on that in that method as we're running around the building and in meetings. So if there's anything that pops up, we stand ready to respond back to you.
Commissioner Querler, you're on mute or something, so.
Commissioner Webb?
Okay, is anybody else having connectivity problems with me? I'm, I'm.
Obviously.
Screens are freezing. So if I, if I appear a little befuddled. What, I have a question about, in the social services realm, HB 4082, that talks about likely entry for county VSO workloads. I wonder if you have any insight into what that might be? And because it's followed by another bill that decreases funding to VSF, VS. Never mind.
No, it's good. I don't have insight. I have no problem tracking down and asking. I have the, Elpro is our committee staffer there. The contact for them. I have no problem asking if that was discussed in committee or in the paperworks and getting back to you on that, Commissioner.
Thank you.
And it is, it is scheduled to keep moving though, so I'll make sure to make that timely so that we don't get behind on that.
Okay, so that could be the one, if I could just interject here, that, that AOC Veterans Committee, what they wanted was to have the cremains of veterans disposed of properly and not just held around. And the concern was, would that, would that create an additional workload if that's the same? I can't keep all the numbers straight. It's too much for me sometimes. That may be the one, because they didn't want to just leave people sitting on a shelf. And the concern was, could that go sideways with the workload issue? If I'm recalling correctly, if that's helpful. Thank you.
That's very helpful. I just took a note here, and I will follow up on that.
Can folks hear me? Other comments, questions? All right. Thank you, Philip. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, West. Appreciate the update. Next are the Budget Committee appointments. We'll turn it over to Jennifer Carlson.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, tonight is just to give you all an overview of the current Budget Committee vacancies in the applicants that we've received to date. These vacancies were advertised on the county webpage starting in December, and they were also advertised in the Daily Astorian two times, starting in December. We'll go ahead and just get started with the countywide budget committee. There is currently three full-term vacancies. Of these vacancies, they are in districts one, four, and five. And as you know, when possible, it is the intent to fill vacancies with representative from each district. As of today, we've received four applicants. There was one additional applicant after the agenda packet was already created, but I think Teresa sent those to you. We've got David Oger in District One, Debbie Booth Schmidt in District Two, Gretchen Allen in District Four, and Norman Brown in District Five. And Gretchen Allen and Norman Brown were on the committee last year. If you don't have any questions about those applicants, we will move on to the 4H Extension and Service District Budget Committee. We had one.
Questions on the Budget Committee appointments? Nope.
Okay, for the 4H Extension Service District, we had one vacancy, and we've received one applicant, and that's Thomas, Inc. And that's a full-term vacancy. And then for the Westport Sewer Service District, this was an addition to the board packet. We have Jeff Hazen. And we do have four vacancies on this committee, but we've got one applicant as of today, and that's Jeff Hazen. And he resides in District Four. And then for the Road District Budget Committee, we have five vacancies and no applicants as of today. Any questions? Okay, if there's no questions, we'll bring this back to you at the March 9th Commissioner meeting, and we'll make appointments at that time.
You know, I just have to ask, do you want us out beating the bushes for people? Or, or what? What do you want us to do here?
I feel we have a good applicant selection for the countywide budget committee. And as I've heard in the past, that's kind of how the special service districts are. It's hard to get applicants for those committees. So I think it's just comes with the territory.
Chair Querler, members of the board, if I might, I would say that Jennifer's, you know, correct that oftentimes special districts become increasingly difficult to find budget committee members per the Oregon budget law. You know, it is desired that we have lay members to the budget committee, but it's not required. It's something that certainly, I think, is a good goal. But, but it's not unusual. What I would say is that if your board knows of anybody that might be interested in serving on either the Road District or the Westport Sewer District, that would be great. But if, if we go with the folks that have applied, I think that's fine too. The biggest challenge right now is we are almost in March on a process that's going to culminate in the coming several months. And so I think that's always an aspirational goal, but we might end up not having fully constituted budget committees for those special districts. Thank you.
Thank you, County Manager. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Do we have any other items on the work session? Okay. Well, we'll have a little reprieve before we start our regular meeting. And I was just going to say, Teresa, if Teresa's on, I am calling in. I think I got muted.
Okay, that might be my fault. I apologize for muting you.
No, that's okay. I just, I heard it come through that I was muted and then, and then I couldn't, yeah, couldn't hear anything or I couldn't talk. So. I have a connection problems.
Okay.
Chair, that's our goal, mute the board chair.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries. Okay, we'll see everybody back. Okay, we'll see everybody back in 20 minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
So do you have two calls coming in, Chair Quayle, or? I just don't want to mute you again.
I just have the one call, but I'm turning it down. Hopefully I can stay with the video here.
Okay.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, as the governing body of Clatsop County, all county service districts for which this body selects is now meeting in regular session. Teresa, can we have the roll call, please?
Chair Quayle?
Here.
I'm here.
Here.
I'm sorry, did you just call my name? Yes. Here. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Banks?
Here.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Thompson moves to approve the agenda.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the agenda, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. First item is a proclamation for National FFA Week. And I think we have Alicia Rickenbach, who's the Secretary of Astoria FFA. Alicia?
It's Olivia.
Oh, I'm sorry, Olivia.
Since the beginning of COVID-19 pandemic, Astoria FFA has earned 4th place and higher or higher in 7 district banners and job interview, public speaking, and agriculture sales, 2nd sectional banners and job interview and public speaking, and 4 state banners in poultry evaluation, horse evaluation, and livestock evaluation. FFA has earned a top 10 placing at a state level in dairy evaluation, public speaking, livestock evaluation, and job interview. We received our first state degree since 2010, and this is the highest degree possible to earn at the state level in FFA. FFA had participation dwindle until almost nothing, and now FFA is back near pre-pandemic numbers of 150. Over $50,000 has been paid for and donated by Astoria High School, Measures 98, FFA alumni and supporters, and the local businesses towards a 30-inch, or 30 feet by 40 feet greenhouse. This greenhouse is used for hands-on CDE and FFA's annual plant sale. Over $5,000 from the Astoria School District bond has been used for remodeling our CDE facilities. A new construction class and forestry has been added to our curriculum since, as well as new to fall 2022, food science and technology. About $10,000 from Perkins Secondary Career Pathway Funds, Wilco and Tractor Supply Grants, and Measure 98 have been used to purchase new equipment for the FFA and CDE areas, hydroponics, artificial insemination stimulation kit, aquaponics, and greenhouse watering systems and tables. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Olivia. We have a resolution in front of us. Do we have a motion in a second?
I'm pretty sure Commissioner Banks wants to make that motion. I'll second.
I'm looking for the motion right now. All I see is the requested action is approve the resolution and order proclaiming February 19 through 26, 2022 to be National FFA Week, and authorize the Chair to read, then sign the proclamation. So authorize Commissioner Banks to read and then sign the proclamation if so.
I'll second whatever she said.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the proclamation. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries, and I'll turn it over to Commissioner Banks, who can read the proclamation.
Before I read the proclamation, I just want to give a shout out to Astoria FFA and their advisor, Ms. Hamby. To survive a pandemic as an FFA advisor and as an FFA chapter is extremely impressive. And I just, I know how much work and effort that those kids have put in and that instructor has put in in order to sustain and grow. And so I'm just, I'm very impressed and very proud of you guys. So I'll begin the proclamation. In the matter of proclaiming February 19 through 26, 2022 to be National FFA Week, whereas FFA and agricultural education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems. And whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members, and whereas agricultural education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in science, business, and technology of agriculture. And whereas state, regional, county, and local governments are taking actions to address climate change and that these efforts are led by elected officials and community partners. And whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve", gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agricultural education. And whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, leadership, patriotism, and cooperation. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Clatsop County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim February 19 through 26, 2022 as National FFA Week.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Banks. And thank you, Olivia. Congratulations on FFA and good luck in the future.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next item. Thank you. We'll move on to Business from the Public. This is an opportunity for anyone to give a two-minute presentation about any item on the agenda, step for public hearing, or any topic of county concern that is not on the agenda. For the board, has anybody registered to speak?
Yes.
Okay, if you registered to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes to present. Teresa, who is first?
Nancy Chase.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Nancy Chase, 3026 Northeast 22, Portland, Oregon, 97212. I have a short-term rental in Cove Beach. And my concern is, on April 13, you'll be seeing the new revised, proposed revised ordinance for short-term rentals. I think if you can have time in the next couple of weeks here to look at the penalty section. It is confusing. I think staff's going in the right direction on tiers of offenses. But I think the punishment far outweighs the crime, so to speak. Under this, if I have three notices of warning in a year, that could be my garbage spilled twice by high winds or raccoons or a lighting issue or a noise, but three in a year, I am suspended for 180 days. So that punishes me financially. If that's over the summer, I'm going to be losing about the $20,000 that I gained that pays my mortgage, pays my taxes, utilities, and everything else. Worse yet, I have to call everybody who's booked their vacations to tell them they can't rent. And if it's in the summer, they're not going to be able to find another location. Often people are flying in to come visit the coast, so I don't think it's the best for Clatsop County tourism. If there's someone in the unit in my house when I get that notice to suspend my license, you know, I'm not even sure if it's legal to tell them to leave. What do I do? So it's not only me financially and people whose vacations have been rained, but it's also my housekeepers who depend on the income, grocery stores, restaurants, your hotel motel tax. So I think it has a lot of ramifications that should be thought out, and there should be a different way to get people to take it seriously and to be good managers of their property. Further down in that revision, you'll see that when there's a violation, I'm required to cover staff costs to enforce, to do the research and enforce it. And I think that might be punishment enough. My one hotline call that turned out to not be merited, you know, ended up in a very lengthy 20, 30-page report and three visits from the code enforcer. So when you think of that kind of time, if it was a valid, you know, that certainly is a, you know, would deter me and make me a better manager if that was the problem. But anyway, I'd ask you to really look at that. It's kind of confusing between infractions and warnings and penalties. I think it's going in the right direction. But I don't, I think suspending for 180 days and later if you have four warnings, up to a year, is just too severe. Thank you for your time and appreciate you giving it consideration.
Thank you. That's all the people that have signed up to speak. Chair Quayle, you're muted.
My apologies. We've all had an opportunity to review the consent calendar.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Didn't hear any objections, was ready to move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the consent calendar as presented. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. We'll move on to the Commissioner Liaison Report, and I'll start with Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Well, it is legislative season, and there are lots of emails and phone calls and conferring. I would say that we are blessed to have both Senator Armitage and Representative Weber as our legislative representatives, and they've been responsive every time I've reached out to them. So I thank them for their gracious accommodation and their interest in all matters Clatsop County. That's number one. Number two, I've been working with Harmony Burright on the Community Water Knowledge Exchange. So Commissioner Banks, Commissioner Webb had been expressing interest in that. We've sent out emails to a bunch of folks. Okay, we are gathering momentum, we are proceeding. What we're looking for is a way to have a grassroots community conversation that's a model for community building. That's a high ambition. I don't know if we'll achieve everything that we want, but what delights me about you and me and us together colleagues with staff is we're forming the community that builds community. So we're doing our strategic planning, that's how we're building community among ourselves. We're carrying that out as we look at issues like water, like fire, like access to the beach, and I could just go on and on and on and iterate. But I think this is positive momentum when I consider what the County Manager is doing with getting a public affairs person and looking at having more robust emergency management services that really make a difference in what's going on in my particular neighborhood. I'm particularly grateful. So I would just say, oh yes, the other thing is, I have a conversation set up with Margaret Van Lee to talk about mass timber technology and building housing from it. You know what I mean? One of these days, by golly, I'm going to sit in this chair and report to you, we are building modular housing with mass timber technology. And until then, I'll just keep inching along. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. We had gone a couple of months without mass timber discussion, so I'm glad that we had that report. Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Toyoka?
Well, good evening, everyone. Just a few items. Number one, Planning Commission, you know, appointment is tonight. Very excited for that. The accelerator, you know, hopefully we've accelerated the process a little bit, but you know, there's so much work to be done on the comprehensive plan and finalizing and getting through that. And I'm just excited to have new members on the board of Planning Commission to help with those decisions and those recommendations so we can get that document complete. And you know, we always talk about affordable and market-based housing. The Planning Commission makes some great decisions, help us pave the way. You know, we gain momentum in that, those land use decisions and zoning decisions. So I'm looking forward to this appointment tonight so we can just keep moving forward. Lot of correspondence. I'm sure my fellow commissioners said, well, about Heritage Park. You know, the concept is wonderful. Heart is in the right place, just location is problematic. So I was, you know, without berating that, I'll segue right into, we had a great conversation, the County Manager, myself, with the Mayor of Seaside and County Manager of Seaside, and talked about microhousing. And they were very, very receptive, very, you know, looking, they were looking into the opportunities as well. But as we discussed with them, it's a regional solution. Not just Seaside, there's got to be Seaside, Warranton, Astoria. All along our county has to be involved in this to make it a regional solution for everyone. So as we look at Heritage Park and we look at our microhousing, I think we can marry those two together, you know, that idea. So maybe not in that Heritage Square where, you know, other people have, you know, we've already had a community center and Heritage Parks and, you know, a lot of community oriented, but maybe look at microhousing that's in a different location, provide services, and make it a true regional solution that we're looking for in terms of the housing crisis for the homeless. So I think we, you know, attacking the homeless as well as the affordable and market-based housing with the Planning Commission, I just see some great inroads being made, and I look forward to the progress to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyka, and appreciate your efforts on that. We'll move on to Commissioner Webb.
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Banks?
I think for the first time in my tenure as a, my first year as Commissioner, I was quadruple booked on one night. And so I had the opportunity, I chose to go out to Westport, to the town hall there, and spent some time with the community and with our staff. And I have to say, I was very impressed with how well our staff handled that informational. It had the potential of being a little bit contentious possibly, but it was very even keeled, very informative, and the presentation was very clear. And so I look forward to that topic coming before our board during a work session here in the future. Our Roads Department presented the two options to our Westport community members, and they just, they did a great job. And so there were a few concerns voiced during that informational, as I'm sure that you are all aware. And it just, it went off well, and I enjoyed being able to be there. And then I followed that with a CFTLC meeting that Commissioner Thompson was able to join me on. And I reiterated concern regarding the future of our county and our economics, and just concerns regarding the lack of communication between the two entities, our county and the Oregon Department of Forestry. So hoping to have a little bit more input. So hoping to have a little bit more input in our future here. And just moving forward, the HCP is still in the NEPA process, it is still under review. They have yet to have an economic modeling, an updated economic modeling. The current one they still have is from 2019. So just looking forward to hearing new information from ODF regarding our state lands. And yeah, working on relationships, working on relationships. And so anyhow, that's it for tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. And Commissioner Banks and I will both be a part of the Childcare Task Force meeting next week. So we've been reading a lot about Little Sprouts and other childcares that are really struggling and some of them closing their doors. And so this has come to a point where we've got to make some decisions. The county has dedicated some funds to support capacity building in childcare throughout the county, and I'm hopeful that we can bring some partners to the table and make that happen. County Council, Joanna Lyons-Antley, has also been a part of this task force. And I know that there are others after reading about Little Sprouts that want to engage as well, at school districts and some businesses as well. So I'm hopeful that when we come out of our meeting on March 1st, we'll be able to have some structure and some plan that we can share. And I will go ahead and turn it over to our county manager.
Thank you, Chair Quila, members of the board. I'll just be quick this evening. If there's no objections, staff would like to transition to the Zoom platform for our meetings starting next week. And so you will be having a little different link, a little different experience, but I think we're ready to make the jump. So if there's no objections, we'll start that next week with the work session. And that's all I have, thank you.
Sounds great to me. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to our next item, which are, which is a public hearing, and this is to amend section 1.1 of the Administrative Code, Ordinance 22-02, it's on page 39 of the packet, and our county manager, Don Boone.
Chair Quila, members of the board, it's through the Administrative Code that your board really reflects upon and then articulates what the organization of the county is going to be. And so there's been kind of historical departments over the years, but one of the best practices is to take a look at the organization periodically and to make sure that it is aligned in a way that can provide effective and efficient services. And one of the areas that I think needs to have further refinement is the emergency management area. There's no doubt that the risk of towards Clatsop County regarding earthquakes, tsunamis, and then windstorms and any other form of natural disaster is high. And I think that it's important as we move forward that the emergency management function be elevated to a department level. And what that will do is allow us the opportunity to have a department director that reports to the county manager, but that can support the very important work that needs to be done in this area. We've been blessed with very committed and skillful staff in this area, and we just want to actually add to the team and position ourselves to really address these long-term infrastructure and long-term planning needs. So our recommendation is that your board conduct the first reading of Ordinance 22-02 by title only, open the public hearing, take testimony, and continue the hearing to March 9th, 2022. And I'd be happy to answer any questions your board might have.
Thank you, county manager. Commissioner Thompson.
Okay, if we pass this, how soon does it happen?
If, once we get through this first reading, we've already been working on all of the details of the job description, so we will be ready to actually open the recruitment. So I would say that, you know, we should, I mean, as we know, recruitments can be a volatile process, but we would hope that in the next three to four months, we would have a director in place.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, if we don't have any, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak?
No, there are not.
Okay. Is there anybody who would like to speak? Mr. Thompson.
Oh, please, let's do this just as fast as we can.
Okay. Any other comments? If I don't have any other comments from the public, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I think that we've, do we have any discussion, any other questions from the commission? If not, we need to make a motion.
Oh, sir, make a motion. Commissioner Thompson says, please, conduct the first reading of Ordinance 22-02 by title only. Open, we did, we did the public hearing, we took testimony. I want to move forward with this. However, this motion needs to read to go forward with this, I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to conduct the first reading of Ordinance number 22-02 by title only. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. County Council, may we have the reading by title only?
Ordinance amending Clatsop County Code Section 1.04.010.
Thank you, County Council. We'll move on to the next public hearing, which is the Solid Waste Franchise Ordinance 21-06, on page 43. And I will turn it over to our county council, Joanna Lyons-Antley. Joanna.
Thank you, Chair Quila and members of the board. Tonight you have in front of you the second reading of the Solid Waste Franchise Ordinance. As you all are undoubtedly aware, we've spoken a few times in the last couple of months, that Clatsop County does not currently have a solid waste collection franchise. This franchise would be to require all haulers to obtain a franchise directly from Clatsop County. Currently, there are two haulers within Clatsop County. One, our biggest is Recology, and I see we have Dave Larmouth here today from Recology. And they serve roughly 4,000 customers in unincorporated Clatsop County. The areas of Elsie Jewel and Fishhawk Lake areas are served by waste management, and so they're the second hauler within Clatsop County. The proposed ordinance requires that all haulers, provided the solid waste collection, must obtain a franchise from the county. The county then provides that administrative oversight of the franchise and will recommend rate adjustments for your board's consideration. As you recall, we had a first reading, I would say, I think it was in January, about a month ago. And at that time, we covered that the franchise itself does not have specific details about service levels. That detail is going to be contained in the rules that will be adopted by your board by resolution. And so they will be coming to you, hopefully, within a couple of months to adopt. In the process of looking at this ordinance, we've engaged with both Recology and Waste Management to obtain their comments and concerns. And you will see that this solid waste ordinance is slightly different than the first one. We heard their comments, particularly Recology took the time, thank you, Recology, for providing us comments and helping us make this ordinance better. Some of the changes, I'm just going to kind of, you know, overview, because I did provide in the packet itself, the track changes. But they added references, which we adopted, requirements to be consistent with industry standards, that it's a violation of the ordinance to advertise or to provide services without a franchise. Allowed a little bit more flexibility with disposal sites, and generally requires more formal action and public process. And then one big change that Recology suggested, which we agreed with, is to change it from shall provide recycling, to shall offer to provide. I think as Recology pointed out, there's a big difference with that. We compromised with Recology on a couple other points. One was changing it from a 10-year term, our original ordinance had a 10-year term, and then it would go into another 10-year term. Recology had requested it be a, I would say, more of a rolling 10-year term, and so our staff has suggested that we adopt that rolling term, but to shorten it to five years, which we know Recology is okay with. And then if a new franchise is needed because the current hauler is not adequately serving the area, we agree that a public hearing and comment is necessary. There are a few things that we're going to address in the rules. One is that the hauler's profit be a flexible target of 8% to 12%, with the target being 10%. These are going to be things that will be addressed in the rules, and we welcome, of course, Recology's comments. And then for any changes to the service levels, the county intends to work with Recology to make sure that not only can Recology meet the service levels that will be eventually proposed in front of the board, but that Waste Management can as well. So with this, we would present this second reading to you all for the board and recommend that you conduct a hearing and adopt the second reading by short title only. One thing I will mention, because I can just sense that you're going to ask this, is when does this ordinance go into effect? It's 30 days after passage, but I will say that, of course, we don't have any rules, we don't have that passed by you all, so we're not, certainly not going to enforce requiring having a franchise at this point until that next piece is adopted, which again, is probably likely in a month or two. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, County Council. Any questions on the staff report? Okay. We'll go ahead then and open the public hearing. Clerk of the Board, are there any members of the public who have registered to speak? Teresa, are there anybody that has registered to speak?
No, there are not.
Okay. Anyone else would like to speak on this matter? Commissioner Banks?
I just have to say how happy I am that 14 months after my first email to county manager that this is occurring. So this was, I'm just, I'm just happy, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Not seeing any other comment from a member of the public, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. And do we have any further discussion from the commission? If not, we'll need a motion to conduct the second reading and adopt Solid Waste Franchise Ordinance 21-06.
She who wrote the email should make the motion, I think.
Well, I'll have to find the motion, but I move that we conduct the second reading by name only, will that work?
It's on page 44, but.
It's 44.
Solid Waste Franchise Ordinance 21-06.
Excellent. You know, Commissioner Thompson, when you're on top of it, and I need my glasses, oop, I think I found it. Move that the board adopt the Solid Waste Franchise Ordinance 21-06 and conduct the second reading by short title only.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the board adopt Solid Waste Franchise Ordinance 21-06 and conduct the second reading by short title only. All those in favor signify with an eye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. County Council, may we have the second reading by title only?
Ordinance adopting Clatsop County Code Section 7.04 to require solid waste collectors to obtain a franchise.
Thank you, County Council. And those are the two public hearings on our agenda. Thank you, Dave Larmouth from Recology for being here. Appreciate all the work on this. We'll move, yeah, thank you. We'll move on to the business agenda. We have three items on the business agenda. First is the fee waiver request from Brotherton-Maconahay CUP Appeal Application, that's on page 66. And I believe Ian Sisson, our senior planner, or is it Gail, Community Development Director, who is going to be presenting on this?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Ian was unable to be here this evening, so I'm filling in for him. The request before you this evening is to waive the $3,170 appeal fee that was paid by the property owners and applicants to appeal a hearings officer's decision to your board back in December of last year, and then that item was continued. And in January of this year, you made a decision not to hear the appeal and to instead uphold the hearings officer's decision. When we set the fees for an appeal, we base it on the cost of the work that's being done, partly to capture staff costs, advertising costs, but also to make up for the hearings officer fee that we cannot capture under state statute, which is that very first appeal. So the way the process works is when an application comes in, there's the initial application fee that covers that initial staff time. Once a first appeal is filed, under state statute, we are only allowed to charge $250. That's the maximum we can charge. An appeal after that, which in this case went to your board, we are, we have set our fees so that we can recapture the cost of that initial hearing that we are restricted from capturing back under ORS. So in this particular case, the application fee for the appeal to your board was the $3,170. The costs that we incurred between the initial hearing, the hearings officer, and then the appeal to your board were $3,995.70. And we do set our fees at the level that we do based on the budget policies that have been approved by your board. And one of those budget policies does state that when we do set our fees, we are supposed to be looking at the total cost and identifying that for setting, for the fee-setting purposes. So the board tonight, you have three options. You can waive all of the $3,170 fee, you can waive a portion of it, or you can choose not to waive or refund any of that fee at all. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for our Community Development Director?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Planning Director Henrik. We had a letter from the attorney in this case who made some arguments. Can you go through that attorney's letter, please, and help me, help me do the math on this? Because what I'm starting out with is, the actual cost was nearly $4,000. The fee that we say represents an average cost of appeal is $3,170, even though the actual cost in this case exceeded that. And then we have the letter from the attorney. So help me do the math in each, each of these factors, please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I did need to bring that up, and thank you for reminding me of that, Mr. Neff's letter. Michael Neff is an attorney who is representing the property owners, and he forwarded that letter to your board this afternoon. So he states in there a breakdown of the fees that the property owners have paid as part of the overall work that they've done to try and establish the right to build a home on their property. And so he cites, first of all, a $250 fee to request and obtain a lot of record determination from community development. So that is its own separate application that anyone can apply for at any time. And what we do is, we trace back the ownership of the property and the configuration of the property. So a property that may be substandard in size... So a property that may be substandard in size may be able to be developed if it was created legally. And that happens through a number of different ways, either through deed or subdivision or something that may have occurred before our rules were in place. Or if it's after our rules are adopted, then they've gotten approvals following the correct process. So that $250 fee for that particular application was not required for them to be able to go through the process that they appealed, if that makes sense. So it's two different sets of application. There was no prerequisite that they pay that $250 for the lot of record determination. It was something they chose to do on their own before submitting any applications to build the house on the property. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So that's the first fee. The second fee was the $1,200 conditional use permit application fee, which would have been required because the property is owned for farm use. And in order to build a dwelling on a property zone for farm use, under state statute, that is the process that they go through. And our application fee is $1,200. So that one is pretty straightforward. There was also, they had a pre-application conference prior to submitting the application. And this was done probably six, I would say, three to six months before they submitted their application. We do sometimes charge that fee. Sometimes we don't, depending on who is invited to the pre-application meeting. If we're having to bring in a lot of staff from different departments or state agencies, then we will usually require the $250 fee to accommodate the time and the meeting. A lot of times, we'll do it just as a sort of pre-pre-application where we just sit down and meet with people and talk to them. In this particular case, there was an attorney and a prospective buyer of the property who wanted to move forward with the application. We did set up the pre-application meeting. And later, the attorney and that set of buyers did not move forward with the application. And instead, the property owners submitted it. I don't know who actually paid that $250 fee. I wasn't able to have time today to go back and see who actually signed the check on that one. Any questions on those two? Okay, so then the third was the $250 to appeal the staff decision up to the hearings officer. And that is a fee that's set by state statute. So that's the maximum we can charge for that appeal. And then finally, there was the $3,170 fee to appeal the hearings officer's decision up to your board. And that, as I stated, we set that fee to try and recoup some of the costs that we can't capture at that first initial hearing where the $250 fee is established. So that does bring his total amount of fees up to $5,120. But the initial one was a completely separate request and did not have to be part of this process. But he has included that fee in there. So does that answer your questions, Commissioner Thompson?
Well, okay, so I just have to go back over this to do a little communication. The first $250 was a voluntary thing that they wanted to do and asked for that. Then the $1,200 is set by Oregon statute. The $250 was because there was another potential buyer and that potential buyer's attorney involved. And then a $250 state statute appeal fee. And then $3,170 to appeal the hearings officer set by Clasip County ordinance. Did I get anything wrong in there?
Just on the second one, the $1,200 fee is set by Clasip County ordinance. But it's because the process is required to be that process under state statute. But the county, your board, actually sets that fee. And then the $250 was an optional fee that they decided to have the pre-application conference with staff. It's not required. It was something that they chose to do because it is a complicated case, as we all learned.
With another potential buyer. Because you said $250. There are three $250 fees.
We love 250. It's a great number.
You're having fun. I'm not sure I am. The middle 250, okay, that one. But that was another potential buyer, not the folks who appealed later.
Yeah, we met with a potential different buyer. I don't know exactly who wrote the check for that second middle $250 fee.
Okay, what I'm trying to do, thank you, I'm done for a while.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
So just so that I'm getting the timeline correct, they paid their $250 appeals fee to appeal the decision made by the appeals hearing officer, correct? So in essence, they paid for their appeal. And then they paid an additional $3,100 for it to come before our board. And I get that ORS statute sets the appeal process to $250 for folks. And that any costs that the county incurs after that $250 is paid is basically on the backs of the county, no matter what situation comes about from that process. Am I correct?
I think if I've understood you correctly, Commissioner Banks, I think you're correct. If there was that initial hearings officer appeal, $250, and there was not a subsequent appeal, the county would just eat those costs.
Okay, that's what I was assuming. And so the additional $3,100 for it to come before the board for an additional hearing is our attempt as a county to recuperate funds from the original appeals process. And so I guess, you know, looking at this from that perspective, no matter what had happened at that $250, they've already paid for their appeal process, set by ORS law, that $250. And so how I feel in regards to this is because we chose as a commission not to hear that appeal and to uphold the hearing officer's decision. I personally feel like they made, they felt that that $3,100 was going to pay for us to hear them. And as a board, we chose not to hear them. So I feel like in, out of just, you know, kindness, I guess, returning that $3,100 to them, I feel like that that would be a good decision. Just because, following the timeline, it's not their fault that ORS law is set as it is. It's ORS law. And so they, in essence, paid for their appeal process, the $250. Because it cost the county more than that isn't up to the landowner. It's up to, you know, the government process, I guess. And so I'm trying to verbalize this in the best manner that I possibly can. And I feel like I'm kind of falling down in the process. But yeah, those are just my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Webb?
I wonder if our community development director could clarify for us a little bit about, I think the, clearly, we have a system and a county policy that when we are processing a variety, actually, of different services for our citizens, that we try to recover the cost of our delivering those services, especially because they are not covered by the day-to-day operation, what we planners call counterwork. But will demand extra effort, time and other expenses on the part of our staff. That's something that, having gone through three budget cycles now, you know, we ask our staff to do that countywide. And I thought that was a fairly kind of mandatory thing that we ask our staff to provide. Can you help me out here, Gail? I thought that the appeal process, we had several decisions that we could have made in that process, right? We could have granted, as one part of the appeal, we could have granted a new hearing. Am I right in that? It would have been a hearing where we, as the board, acted as the hearings officer. That's a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, you're correct. You could have conducted a de novo hearing, meaning from scratch, as if it had never been heard.
Well, that was one of those. So the money that they paid was for the staff to come to the board and request a hearing. Am I right about that?
Well, it was for your board to decide how you wanted to hear it. And then we don't have a staggered rate or a fee schedule for if the board says, no, we're going to uphold, then, you know, maybe you pay less. Or if we go full de novo hearing and we start from scratch, then you pay the full fee. But I would believe that there was an expectation on the part of the applicants that there could be a new hearing by the board, even though that's not what they requested.
Right, okay. So there are two other issues here that I'd like to address. And one of them is that the fact that the applicants did not hire an attorney or a land use planner to assist them in the determination of whether or not they could achieve their ultimate goal, which was to build a house on this property. Instead, they were represented by a Realtor. In my experience as a land use planner in Oregon and also as a licensed Realtor, which I was for a number of years, this is a highly unusual occurrence. In certain places, actually, this was just, I have never, with all of the hearings and land use actions that I've been exposed to, I've never, ever had a Realtor come forward representing their clients in a land use planning action. And I think the reason probably that I've never seen that is that, first of all, the Realtor has an ethical responsibility to act only as far as her expertise allows. And I think that most of the procedural rules of licensed Realtors precludes they're representing themselves as being an expert in any manner that they're not. Secondly, a Realtor has a personal financial interest in the land use process. And I find that, I find it very unfortunate. I find it very, very out of the ordinary. And I think that one of the reasons that this staff work for us was so, Commissioner Banks, may I finish before you wave your hand, okay? I'm sorry, it's just a little, you know. Okay. So I think that the representation by the Realtor caused our staff an awful lot of extra staff time to prepare all of the steps that we're later than gone through. I think it would be a very bad precedent for us to return to an applicant fees that were legally and appropriately charged. I think that from then on, anytime anybody has to go through a land use planning process, they think they might have the right to say, oh, well, whoops, we lost. We were wrong, and so we want our money back, even though the staff work has already gone into this. I think we'd be setting ourselves up for, you know, for establishing a precedent that we could not later defend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Banks?
Whether or not a Realtor was involved has no bearing on the conversation. The conversation is in direct regards to the entity or the people that we are dealing with here that filed and that asked for the board to hear their appeal. And so whether or not a Realtor was involved or, you know, otherwise known as family in this particular situation, is my guess. It has no bearing on the conversation. What has bearing on the conversation is that they already paid for their appeal. It was the $250 fee. And even though the county, it cost the county more in that appeal, they'd already paid for it. And so looking at the timeline, the $3,100 was an amount set by the county to recoup fees with even Director Hendrickson's verbiage for the county commission to hear the appeal. The county chose not, the county commission chose not to hear the appeal. And so I feel like part of the process was missing. They didn't receive what was expected by paying that $3,100. What was expected was for us to hear their appeal, and we chose not to. And as a board, we chose not to. And so I'm looking at this from the perspective of moving forward. Maybe there was a breakdown in communication between our staff and this entity. Maybe there wasn't. Maybe in the future, moving forward, we have clearer guidelines or verbiage, clarify those expectations. Just I know in my personal phone calls with these folks, there was a lawyer involved multiple times in the process, just to clarify that note. And also, they were under the expectation that we were going to hear them. And so I'm advocating for them in this conversation when I say that they expected for us to hear them, and we didn't. And so I feel like because we chose not to, refunding their money seems logical to me.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Okay, now I'm really concerned. My rule always for myself is, is it legal? Is it ethical? Is it fiscally prudent? When I hear Commissioner Banks, whom I have great respect and affection for, say that she had calls with the people who were appealing, this was a legal matter before us. Should this have been disclosed? Should every conversation that was had and every content of that conversation been disclosed? I guess I'm looking to county council to help us have our firm, clear ethical guidelines. I mean, well, no, I'm asking Commissioner Banks, I'm asking county council for this because I want to be clear that we're doing what's legal and what's ethical and what's fiscally prudent.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I am not concerned with Commissioner Banks speaking to the applicants in this case because it's not a quasi-judicial decision in front of you at this moment. It is a question... It is a question, a legislative question of whether to waive the fees. And so if it was to come back to you for a quasi judicial decision at that point, we would ask everybody to disclose all of their ex parte contacts, which would include those types of discussions. But at this moment, it is not a quasi judicial decision, it's a legislative decision. So I do not have any concerns. I hope that helps.
Thank you. I just want to finish this up, please. Okay. So so we aren't in trouble legally. As as far as ethics goes, I share Commissioner Webb's concerns. I've taken oaths of office to affirm the constraints on my professional expertise kind of my whole life. I started when I was a beginning social worker, and I take an oath for pretty much every role I'm in. I understand the limits to my professional expertise. That's not what we're here to talk about. In terms of the third issue, the fiscal prudence, I'm with Commissioner Webb on this one. We're setting a terrible precedent if what we say to people is, okay, go through the process, we're going to tell you that there is a set of costs because we're talking about a business decision here, and business likes certainty. So they want to know what the costs are. The other part of business is, if I can get a break on my costs, I'm going to try and do that. So I'm less concerned with being kind to people. I mean, I like to be kind to people, but what I'm concerned with here is the precedent that we're setting and the fairness to everybody else who does business with the county. Because we have this process where we say, staff, recoup those costs. Now, the staff is doing what we told them to do and attempting to recoup the the true costs associated with this. If there's something we need to true up about how we set our fees and how we, okay, fine. But otherwise, anybody who doesn't like what we do can come to us again and again and again, take staff time, take commissioner time, not worry about what's legal, not worry about what's ethical or prudent, and then just say, treat us kindly. I mean, I I'm not for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
I wanted to clarify that I already shared that I had had previous conversations with this group of people at the prior meeting, and we were discussing whether or not to hear their appeal. I just wanted to take a moment and and to clarify that. And then when I think when I'm conversing about ethics, I think that we have a true verbiage issue here in in the conversation because even I, listening to how this was presented to to this couple, to these folks, was under the impression that we would hear them, and we chose not to. And so just as it was presented to me and in those conversations, I was under the impression that we were going to hear them. And so that was in in this original conversation, what I was asking for was for us to give them that that moment in front of us. Because that's what the $3,100 was paying for, was that moment in front of us for them to state their case. And we didn't. We didn't give that to them. And so when when I'm looking at this and and had I personally paid that $3,100, I would have had the expectation to be able to at least present my case in front of the board. Instead, it was a no. They were not allowed to present their case. And so to them, that $3,100, they didn't get what they paid for. And so that's why I feel like either A, in the future, we need to do a better job in 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 sharing expectations or or potentials with people who are paying us that amount of money. That's like a that's like a used car. $3,100 is a used car. So they paid us the amount of a used car for us to hear them, and we chose not to as a board. And so that's what I'm advocating for is 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 just either in this process, we clarify ourselves and and we explain before they write the check what is going to happen, or we follow through and we hear them.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. I really appreciate hearing your logic. I was just thinking, it isn't. If we were if we were doing the not a legislative but a quasi judicial, it isn't enough to say I had a conversation. We have to say what's the content of the conversation so everybody can hear. You know, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing, and I believe you share that. So I think we're all trying to do the right thing. In my mind, we spent the time reading the material and debating. So in that sense, we heard their appeal, and we decided not to go further with the appeal, hearing it. But we spent a lot of time reading it and discussing it. So in my mind, they got their money's worth, but that's how I look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Webb, and then Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Webb?
Yeah, I I am certain that if the process that when they wrote that check, that they understood what the options were that the commissioners had to adjudicate. That's the wrong word, I'm sure. But but to but to consider their appeal. And what we did have in front of us was a pretty extensive staff report which reported on the their attempts to communicate with the with the petitioners what the weaknesses were in their application. And they failed to respond to that. They failed to come in and to prove that the state mandated agricultural activities could not be done on their property. So as far as I was concerned, when that appeal came to us, they didn't have anything additional to add that would have been beyond what the staff report had had already informed us about. And and so to me, they put our staff through a whole lot and didn't always respond to our staff's requests for certain things that they certainly could have done if they'd had a case. So I assume that the if because the issue, I think, was whether or not they were performing agricultural activities and whether it was possible for them to perform agricultural activities on this property. And there was nothing in any of the background information or on any of the comments that their realtor represented to us. So I think we were perfectly within our right to say, we, you know, we don't understand what more there is in this. And and as I say, I guess I guess perhaps I agree with Commissioner Thompson that my biggest fear is that going forward, people who who file appeals and justifiably have to pay for the staff time involved are going to say, well, you know, on this, on on February 23 of 2022, you know, this this the Board of Commissioners of Clatsop County refunded the money that had been had been given to the county for the appeal, for the right to appeal, for the process. And so we think that you ought to do the same thing for us and give us back our money. I think it's a very, very dangerous precedent. Very dangerous. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Webb. Is it all right there, Commissioner Banks? I want to go to Commissioner Toyoka, who hasn't spoke yet. Commissioner Toyoka?
Thank you, and I just don't want to oversimplify things, but as I read, you know, I kept rereading this thing over and over again, and the process, everything else we've had, the background materials. And I see that they paid a fee application or fee for an appealing the hearing officer's decision to the Board of Commissioners. Then, you know, the Board of Commissioners decided to not hear the appeal. So there was, you know, they paid for a fee for an app for an appeal to the hearing to hear appeal to the hearings officer decision. It did. They did not get what they paid for. It didn't say that, you know, a review of the appeal or anything else. It just said there was a fee for an appeal. To me, simplistically, it's black and white. You know, you pay for something, you don't get it. You know, I paid for a movie ticket, they canceled the movie, I get my money back. I I started, I just started, everything I've read, I go kind of go to the basics. You know, here was a fee. It doesn't say for potential review. It doesn't say for anything like that. It just says fee to appeal the hearings officer, which they did not receive. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm reading it just simplistically that, you know, pay for a service they did not receive.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Just one point. I mean, I I think this has been a good discussion, and I think we're going to disagree on this one because Commissioner Thompson, Commissioner Webb raised good points. I know there's a lot of staff time that has been put into this. But I I tend to agree with Commissioner Toyoka and Commissioner Banks. This 3,170 was for a de novo appeal, in my opinion, and we did not grant that. And the reason we didn't is because state law prohibited us, and so we felt like we could not take this up. Had we decided otherwise and had they lost, I certainly wouldn't feel like refunding them 3,170. But under the circumstances and the way that this played out, I certainly think that it's it's justified to to give them the the fee in full back. That's how I feel. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, thank you, sir. Well, I appreciate hearing everybody's logic, and good people will disagree sometimes. The question I have is if if what we if what we're voting on tonight comes down in a particular way, we are in effect saying to staff, go back and redefine what you say about your fees because what you're saying isn't clear. So they staff has to go back and redefine their fees so that people understand that clear communication that you colleagues are asking for, and I appreciate that. The other question I have is, can anybody who had to pay that fee in the in the past come back at us and say, well, to Commissioner Webb's point, look, you gave it, you refunded theirs, you know, do we get ours back? I mean, do we have financial liability going forward? I mean, sorry, going backward as well as forward for cases we've already decided. I mean.
Well, I think it's probably a question that the staff would have to answer, but I think this is a pretty unique case with a lot of complicated circumstances. I certainly was confused when we first considered it. And I think ultimately, I came down on the side that we couldn't review it because it's a matter beyond our jurisdiction. It was a state law with regards to the ag land. So that's why I voted the way that I did initially, but I also feel like they didn't get their day in court, to put it very bluntly. So that's why I would be for waiving the fee, but I bet the staff, if they if they feel this is something that needs to be addressed by reviewing the the fee schedule, or if this is going to open us up to other requests for for reimbursement, I don't know.
Come on, county manager.
Chair Quila, members of the board. What I would suggest is that, you know, the the county looks at our fees every year, and we will go back and take a look at this fee, have a conversation about whether or not the disclosures were clear about 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 what the what the fee was actually for and what the options for the board was. Because I think ultimately, it just comes down to to kind of, you know, buyer beware of of just being really clear about what 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 are the possibilities when you pay for something? And so I think we can do that, and I'm honestly not informed enough to know whether that those disclosures have been made. But I think it's certainly something we will look at, and we'll look at the fees and 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 the fee structure just to make sure that we feel comfortable that it is as clear as it possibly can be. Because as we as we all know, we aim for transparency at all times. We aim for fairness at all times. And so so we will look at that through a very common lens that we look at really almost everything. We we touch and just make sure that it's meeting those tests. Thank you.
Community Development Director? Gail?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to let the board know, following up on some of what the county manager has just spoken about. I pulled up the appeal application. And on the application that everybody gets, there is a section that lays out the process that an appeal goes through. And on there, it does discuss that the Board of Commissioners shall issue an order stating the scope of review to be one of the following, and then it lays out those four options from denial all the way up to a de novo hearing. So that process was laid out on the application form that they received. But we will follow up on the fee structure. We did do a review in 2020, and we will look at that again as part of this upcoming budget year.
Thank you, Community Development Director. Commissioner Thompson?
I just want to say the, really, I want to be fair to everybody who interacts with the planning department. I want to be fair to every taxpayer in Clatsop County. And that's that's where my concern is tonight. And and, you know, $3,170 isn't going to make us or break us, but how do we keep faith with our taxpayers and the people who purchase our services that we're doing the right thing? So I like that we had this discussion. I hope we've all learned, and I hope we'll go forward with more clarity and better communication. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I did notice that there was an email that that said that the applicants were going to go forward with a zone change. Did folks see that, or that was their next action or their intent? Okay. Do we have a motion? We have three options in front of us. Commissioner Banks?
I move that we refund the 3,100. I'm sorry, what was the specific dollar amount? I don't have.
31. 3170?
I move that we refund 3,170 to good gracious, I'm sorry, my phone died to
Brother.
Entity of conversation.
Okay, is there a second?
I would second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to waive the appeal fee in full for 3,170. So that's $3,170 in the case of Brotherton McConaughey CUP appeal application. All those in favor signify with an aye. Aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Did you say aye?
I said aye. Okay, all those opposed?
I'm so.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Chair Quila?
Aye?
Vice Chair Thompson?
Nay.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Aye.
Commissioner Webb?
Nay.
Commissioner Banks?
Aye.
Okay. The motion is approved to waive the appeal in full. Good discussion, and and thank you, Gail, for all your work, and please pass that along to Ian as well. We'll move on to the next item, which is the Planning Commission appointment on page 72. And I will turn it back over to our Community Development Director.
Thank you. We have two vacant openings on the Planning Commission. We have a total of six applicants who have submitted applications that remain current. Your board had an opportunity on January 29 to meet five of those six applicants and get a little bit of time to discuss some questions with them and look at their interest in serving on the Planning Commission. We do have a few parameters that we work within in terms of our bylaws and state statute, and those are noted in your agenda summary. The bylaws do restrict us to two members from incorporated areas, and we do currently have two active members on the Planning Commission who are both residents of Astoria. So if you wanted to appoint new new Planning Commission members who live in incorporated areas, you would need to remove one or both of those current active members. And that's per our bylaws. Per state statute, we do have restrictions on the number of people who can serve on the Planning Commission who are in the same occupation or profession, and particularly with relation to the selling, buying, or developing of real estate. And I did send the board after I had some questions this afternoon, I sent you all the ORS that spells that out, which is in ORS two fifteen, and then county council also sent you a follow-up email. The ORS does not define what it means to be a person who buys, sells, or develops real estate, and so there is a little bit of room for interpretation for that. And the reason that I bring that to your board's attention is that we do have a member on the Planning Commission right now who is a contractor. So if moving forward, you'll need to determine which of those applicants would fit the criteria for developing real estate or property, and then appoint, make your appointments accordingly. And both county council and I am here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Gail. Any questions for our community development director or our county council? Okay, we, we have, Commissioner Thompson.
All right, just a process comment, I, I would sincerely and firmly ask that any legal issue be run through county council before it comes to the board. I, I've had too many years of not having land use issues run through county council for a legal determination. I don't want to see anything else come before us that hasn't been run through county council, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any other questions, comments? Commissioner Banks.
I just wanted to say that I really enjoyed the interview process that we had with these folks. I was sad to see that, that one was unable to attend, but that I, I really enjoyed listening to both Mr. Powers and Mr. Crosshour. I can't pronounce his last name, please, somebody correct me.
I think you got it right, isn't it, Crosshour?
A, because I'm phonics didn't sound this time. But anyhow, I really enjoyed both, both of those applicants, everyone did a great job in my opinion, but for me personally, I'm leaning towards those two applicants to fill our positions.
Okay, let's see, Commissioner Thompson, or excuse me, Commissioner Toyoka and then Commissioner Thompson.
Just a question, so we have no intention of, or doing, of replacing the two individuals in Incorporated Astoria, correct? And if we do not, we, could we, you know, thank the other two applicants, applicants from Incorporated Astoria for the application process and tell them to please keep, you know, keep that in mind, because as seats come open, it's difficult to fill, and these are wonderful applicants, and unfortunately, we're not going to remove someone to put them in, but we'd love to see that they, they retain interest in the Planning Commission in the future.
I think that's a good point, Commissioner Toyoka, and they both participated in the, in the interview process, so I appreciate that. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, sir. Well, you know, I, I appreciate that we had the interview process, and I think it's a good model when we're having applicants, I don't know how, how many Saturdays we want to devote to having additional board member meetings, just, just an idea, though. I'm really, I really liked Jason Crosshour and his energy and his track record in the community. I also like Mike Magyar, because a surveyor, in my mind, a surveyor is somebody who provides data on an hourly basis. A developer is somebody who has a greater risk and greater profit associated with the development of property. Those are very distinct in my mind. A surveyor is a technician. Mr. Magyar has been on our Planning Commission, he stepped off for personal reasons, which I found compelling, is willing to step back on, I find that compelling. When I look at the terms of office that we're seeing are going to expire pretty soon, we've heard the issue raised of institutional memory, and one way to have institutional memory continue to strengthen and enrich our Planning Commission would be to appoint Mr. Magyar, so I'm, I am advocating for his appointment along with Mr. Crosshour. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I think we had very strong candidates, and I really appreciated the interview process as well. And I think Commissioner Toyoka spoke wisely about having them continue to be in the queue as we are going to have three new appointments coming this July. I agree with Commissioner Banks, I really think that, that Mr. Power and Mr. Crosshour made strong arguments, and I think they would be good Planning Commission members, and, and that's where I'm, that's where I'm leaning.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Thompson.
Well, sir, as I look at this, though, they're both from Clatsop Plains, right?
I believe so.
Yeah, well, I'd, I'd like more geographical diversity. I mean, we are going to have some vacancies coming up probably next summer. So I'd, I'd like to have more geographical diversity now and not have both candidates come from just one part of the county. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. That's as close as Warton, to Warton as we have somebody, so I, I like the fact that we've got a couple from Clatsop Plains. Clatsop Plains is a pretty big area, by the way. Commissioner Webb.
Yeah, I, I'd like to speak on behalf of Mike Magyar as well. I think when we, when we lost the commissioner who we asked to step aside, we lost an enormous amount of historical knowledge of the development of Clatsop County. And there is no one who I've worked with at the local level who has more knowledge of the history of land development and the present activity of land development going on in the county than Mike Magyar. He is an unbelievable, enormous treasure chest of information. And I understand that there was some kind of a reason why he didn't come to the, to, to the, one of my interview that was held, which, which I value highly, I agree with the chair, that, that I hope we can do more of that in asking people, you know, we have, just tonight, right, we have, you know, half a dozen boards and to talk about, and I really like the idea of bringing people in for interviews, I really do, I, it's so much, it helps our, it helps my decision tremendously. But I can testify that Mike Magyar is someone I have, I've worked with, and, and then in my estimation is really one of the most skilled surveyors with a tremendous knowledge of the county. And he has taught me more about what's on our maps that isn't always visible to the naked eye than I could ever have, have learned alone. So I too support, support a, a vote for Mike. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Webb, and I, I agree, I've heard nothing but fantastic things about Mike Magyar, he's a skilled surveyor, and I think you know, he has an impeccable reputation, I do appreciate what's been said, you know, my only issue is that we held interviews, and when we held interviews, Mike was the one that, that wasn't there. That's just, you know, we, we wanted to have that as, as one of the steps in the process. And we all agreed to that. Any other comments? Who, who was next? Commissioner Banks?
I just want to say that, you know, I've only heard good things from, from you folks here tonight, but I would have enjoyed meeting him, and I've never met him, and I've never had any workings with him. And, and so again, just reiterating, I would have loved to have meet him, met him through the interview process, but I feel like those that took the time to show up that day, despite, you know, some even being on the, on, on the freeway, pulling over, I feel like it, it was a small portion of the day, and, and to, and to share with him, i- if he's listening, or, or for, if anyone here wishes to share with him, I'd, I'd love for him to, to keep his application in the pool for, for our next upcoming slots that are, are going to be coming available. And then hopefully, at that point, I'll be able to meet him. So, nothing against, against, you know, the person that we are discussing, it's just, you know, I, I feel like I need to honor that interview process that we all agreed to.
Thank you, Commissioner Banks. Commissioner Thompson?
Well, the, the interview process wasn't mandatory, it, it was optional, we said, so that, that matters less to me, and that, it could be, I'm biased in this regard. I'm looking at the diversity again, the geographical dispersion, because one of the issues I had with the Planning Commission has been that it has been, there's been a preponderance in one commissioner's district. So if, if we look at what we have now is this magically organized, one for every commissioner on the current sitting members, and if we add two from District Two, that puts, in my mind, the Planning Commission out of balance again. So I'm, I'm not going to give up easily on this one, for me, that's more important than if you want to, if you want to not appoint people tonight because we want to have another interview process, we probably don't. But if that's the most important thing in your mind, it isn't the most important thing in my mind. What's most important in my mind is the balance and the depth and variety of the specific skills. And what I like about a surveyor is they're on the ground. They know the land, they know the water, they know the buildings, they know the roads, it's very specific, it isn't abstract or theoretical. Not just finances, I mean, that stuff matters too, but I want an on-the-ground person, so I'm going to I want to make a motion to, do you want to break them apart since we seem to agree on Jason Crosshour, is that agreeable? Should we do that? No.
You're muted, Mark.
I, I'm sorry about that, yeah, so I think it'd be easiest to do one motion at a time, and Commissioner Toyoka, I know you wanted to say something, but yeah, I think we should entertain, after your comment, let's entertain a motion for at least the, the first one, which would be to fill Myrna Patrick's seat.
Well, my only comment is that, you know, we can only appoint, have two members on the Planning Commission in the building industry. And we have Carrie Johnson right now, that is District Four. So we have, in, please, Director Henrickson is a surveyor and a contractor in the same industry, or is that, is Carrie Johnson?
So I think that there is interpretation that can be made on the ORS, and I will defer to county council because she has sent you a memo later, or earlier this afternoon, addressing this issue.
So it depends on how narrow, if the question is same kind of occupation, business, trade, or profession. So what the ORS says is that members of the commission shall be residents of various geographic areas of the county. No more than two voting members shall be engaged in the same kind of occupation, business, trade, or profession. If you look at it as a general contractor, so say, perhaps you say general contractor is the occupation, business, trade, or profession, and you define it narrowly, then I would say Mr. Magyar, did I say his name correctly? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm the worst with pronunciation as well. If you define it narrowly, he's a surveyor, which is not the same type of occupation, business, trade, or profession. Obviously, they work with each other. You know, it, it's similar in my mind, and I kind of gave this example of contractors often hire different types of trades to do work in their construction projects, like, for example, a plumber or electrician are in different professions, but they work together in, in several types of different projects. So I, I guess I would defer to the board, it's really how the board would define it, but in my mind, I can see an argument that they are not the same type of occupation, business, trade, or profession.
Thank you.
Thank you, county. Commissioner Webb?
Yep, I just have a, a point of order. How are we going to proceed? I mean, are, are we going to say? Just, how, how, how are we going to proceed with this vote? We're going to stand them up one at a time and say how many votes for and against, you know, I, I just.
Well, I, I don't think so, I think it'd be appropriate for someone to make a motion and nominate someone for one seat, one position. I would say that the first one would be to approve the appointment of whoever we decide to the Clatsop County Planning Commission to fill the term of Myrna Patrick. So Myrna Patrick was the first vacancy, and if we want, and that would actually extend till June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
So do we want to make a motion to fill that first, and then fill the other one second?
Yeah, that's.
Okay.
I, I think that's, that's a good way to proceed, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Banks, did you have a?
I, I was just waiting for Commissioner Thompson to make a motion to approve Jason Crosshour.
Uh huh. And I'll second it. I'll second, okay, good. We're agreed on that, thank you, sir.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, the board approved the appointment of Jason Crosshour to the Clatsop County Planning Commission to fill the term of Myrna Patrick, which will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. All those in favor signify with an aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that was unanimous, the next is the term of Robert Strickland, and that would expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Chair, I would move to appoint Michael Magyar. Approve the appointment of Michael Magyar to fill the term of Robert Strickland, which will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Mike Magyar to fill the term of Robert Strickland, which will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor signify with an aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, is there a roll call vote?
Yes, Chair Quayle.
Nay.
Vice Chair Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Toyoka.
Nay.
Commissioner Webb.
Aye.
Commissioner Banks.
Nay.
Okay, so nays have it. Do we have another? Do we have another name, another appointment? Commissioner Toyoka?
I would move that the board approve the appointment of Clark Powers to the Clatsop County Planning Commission to fill the term of Robert Strickland, which will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to appoint Clark Powers to fill the term of Robert Strickland, which will expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. All those in favor signify with an aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. I, I have it.
Was yours an aye vote?
Was mine?
Commissioner Webb.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, it was an aye vote.
Thank you.
It's unanimous? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. It had been a long process in order to fill these vacancies. I really appreciate all of everybody's investment in this and this has been very good discussion. And, uh, again, to all of the candidates, all of those that have applied, we really encourage you to continue. Uh, keep your applications, uh, current. We want to, we want to consider them once again when we have, uh, some appointments to make this year in this July. So thanks again for everybody that's participated in the process. Next is the redistricting legal, uh, description for Ordinance twenty-one dash zero seven, resolution on page eighty-seven. And Tracy Kavenco, our, uh, county clerk is here and I'll go ahead and turn it over to her.
Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me okay?
Okay. Yeah.
Uh, okay, good. What you have before you today is a resolution adopting the legal descriptions for the Ordinance twenty-one oh seven, modifying the Commissioner District boundaries. Due to the COVID pandemic and, and the delay in the census, um, the county was unable to complete the legal descriptions prior to the board's adoption of Ordinance twenty-one dash oh seven, modifying the Board of Commissioner District boundaries. Staff has since completed the legal descriptions and the maps that established the new Commissioner District boundaries that were adopted. In your packet, you will find them attached. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions of our county clerk? Commissioner Webb?
I have a question about the precincts. Is that germane or should I do that someplace else? Yeah, yes, I should do that someplace else?
No.
I can't.
Hang on.
At the county manager and I don't know.
I mean, um, Chair Quillah, members of the board, what I would say is feel free, Tracy's here. It, it is a related issue, so.
Yes, okay. Okay, I just, it's a simple question, Tracy. First of all, thank you. This must have been an incredible job to perform. And thank you so much for the speed with which you did it. It was really, really work, great work. But one, but my question about the precincts is, is there any kind of an ORS or, or other procedural rule about what would constitute a precinct? In terms of either population or land area or any of that kind of thing?
Good, very good question. Um, there is an ORS that does state a precinct cannot be more than fifty thousand voters. Well, of course, we don't have that many voters. So the next thing we, uh, we do as clerks is we try to follow natural boundaries that are created with commissioner boundaries and/or city boundaries, school boundaries and such. And with the redrawing of the commissioner boundaries, we found it a good opportunity to clean up the precincts lines that go through people's properties, that go through in the middle of nowhere, um, and really try to clean it up. We went from thirty-three precincts down to twenty-five. And I think, uh, it'll just make things a little easier for everybody. And thank, I appreciate, um, you thanking me personally, but it takes a village. It took a lot of people in this county departments to get this done together and I appreciate every one of them.
So absolutely, absolutely. I, you know, I, I mean, I've spent a good part of my, of my career horsing around with, with boundaries. And for anybody who, who really wants to, to take a look at, at our wonderful surveyors' boundary descriptions, um, I, I just wish I could have been in the room for the week it must have taken and to do each of those. So thank you all very, very much.
Yeah, it's quite a puzzle to, to put together, isn't it? Any other comments, questions? Okay, so we, um, need a motion to adopt a resolution and order and, and basically adopt the map and legal descriptions.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt a resolution and order adopting the map and legal descriptions for the Commissioner District boundaries adopted in Ordinance twenty-one dash zero seven.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt a resolution and order adopting the map and legal descriptions for the Commissioner District boundaries adopted in Ordinance twenty-one dash zero seven. All those in favor signify with an aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And again, Commissioner Webb said it best. I think it, it is quite a, a feat to, to, to pull this off in, in this short period of time. It takes a great deal of effort, thanks to our county clerk and your entire department and staff, um, and to everyone that's worked on this. And of course, our county administrator, uh, administration and county manager. Um, uh, thank you again for, for all the hard work. Do we have any items for the good of the order this evening? Okay, and we don't have any executive session? So, uh, we will go ahead and adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.